Welcome everybody to another United States Pirate Party meeting. We are all filled up tonight, which is great. Good to see. Uh, my name is Drew Bingham and I will be your captain for this evening. Uh, we have some business to take care of. We have some special guests. So this will be a good one and uh, we'll be streaming again on Friday, all day, starting at 10 a.m. Pacific. For our annual conference, so just to get that out of the way. Alright, I'm gonna go around for IDs. If you just uh, say your name, your state and uh, what you do, or you know, whatever. It's, we're not super strict about it. Art, I see you first.
Uh, Art Ramon, I'm in Arizona. Uh, professionally, I do IT stuff and uh, on the side I do art. So, and I'm with the uh, Transhumanist Party, uh, right now, uh, Vice Chairman and Director of Art.
Alright, thank you very much. Wanda?
Wanda, Florida Pirate Party.
Alright, Jolly Mitch?
Ahoy, Jolly Mitch of the Chicagoland Night, the Illinois Pirate Party, and friend of the show.
Appreciate that. David?
And I'm the other representative for Florida Pirate Party.
Alright, thank you David. Janati?
Janati Stoliaroff II, Chairman of the United States Transhumanist Party, joining from Carson City, Nevada.
Alright, Darren?
I'm uh, Darren McKeeman. I am the Quartermaster of the California Pirate Party and the United States Pirate Party.
Alright, Eli?
Eli McGee, Massachusetts Representative.
Alright, Dustin?
Uh, this is Dustin Epps from Virginia, a random ass pirate.
Alright, thank you. Jason? Are we, Jason, are you having audio issues? Alright, we'll come back to you. Anthony?
How's it going? Anthony, Director of Technology Outreach, US Transhumanist Party.
Awesome, thank you. And Blaze?
Hello, uh, Blaze Henry, and I represent the Arizona Pirate Party.
Alright, thank you everybody. Alright, so as you've probably seen, we had some guests from the United States Transhumanist Party. We are working on a coalition, building a coalition with the Transhumanist Party, getting things started. Um, Mitch, I'm gonna kick it to you to give us a rundown on where we're at with that.
Sure, so first of all, thank you to all the guests of the Transhumanist Party for joining us today. Uh, we, as of right now, I believe we've all agreed or come to the basic agreement of everything that was listed out in the bylaws. I think the only thing that we're really set to do is discuss a name and put a stamp on it. So, I'm uh, otherwise, I do believe that the, the coalition is pretty much uh, I don't wanna say it's pretty much established, but I think we're in agreement of how the structure will be laid out. So, as of right now, I think we're just putting a, a bow on it.
Alright, uh, can I also have somebody keep an eye on the YouTube chat? Do I have a volunteer for that?
Um, I'm gonna get on the Florida account and do that. I just need a minute.
Thank you. Um, alright, uh, let me see here, I have. Darren, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come to you here. Let's see if we can do, do a little cleanup on uh, our, on the conference on Friday. I'm gonna give you the floor.
So, uh, we have a location now. Uh, and uh, once we get uh, on Wednesday, I'll be announcing that to everybody. Uh, but basically, everything's all set for uh, for Friday. All we have to do is uh, nail down the, the agenda. Uh, I know that we've got Roger DeJohn's daughter is going to be doing the keynote, the opening keynote. Uh, past that, uh, I haven't really looked at the, the document uh, that we have up on the Google Docs yet, to see if we've got any time slots or people that are speaking. And, but uh, I, I don't know if anybody else said, we, I mean, let me try and bring that up actually.
Yeah, we have, we do have uh, let's, I have everything starting at uh, 10 a.m. Eastern or Pacific, sorry. Uh, and keynote, that's the keynote, then we have a 10:30 speaker.
Yes, uh, I don't have any of the speakers lined up myself. Uh, I was going to see if we had anybody that was wanting to take charge of that. Uh, but, we, at 11 a.m., we've got the Pirate AI Panel. Uh, at 10:30 a.m., we have another slot for another speaker. Uh, 12 p.m. to 1 p.m. is a lunch break, uh, and these are all Pacific Standard Time. Uh, times as well. Uh, 1 p.m. is pirate business for 30 minutes. Uh, nominations and questions for candidates for 120 minutes. Uh, voting opens at the conclusion of this period and closes at midnight, uh, Pacific Standard Time. Uh, at 3:30, uh, we have the Pirate Crypto Panel, just 30 minutes. Uh, and then 4, 4 p.m., uh, closing remarks, remarks, uh, points of personal privilege. And at 4:30 p.m. adjournment and we sign off. Let's note the uh, time, they're somewhat flexible. The captain will do his best to keep us on schedule within reason, so uh, yeah, uh, I don't know if we actually have, uh, who's been organizing uh, speakers. Uh, I haven't been able to get to it myself.
Mitch, you had a couple of speakers, right? You had at least one.
I do. We have a former employee of the USDA who's willing to come on at uh, and now unfortunately Darren, I did want to talk to you about it. He is available to talk at 2 p.m. Pacific. I, I mean, if, if that's not an issue, then that's just the slot he, he requested.
I think we can roll with the punches kind of thing, so.
Yeah, we can work, we can work with that.
But yes, he will be joining us to discuss uh, patents and uh, you know, how they affect the agriculture uh, you know, frontier and you know, it's a, as a pirate party, patents and copyright are some of our uh, foundational issues. So it's kinda nice to be able to get something in the agriculture field about it.
Cool, awesome. Well, I've got uh, one more person that I'm talking to about a speaker slot. Uh, but I'll, I'll try and make that announcement closer to Wednesday.
Okay, alright, so yeah, I mean, right now we have two speaker slots aside from the keynote. So, yeah, Darren, if you, if you wanna fill that, that's fine, when just, we can, we can rearrange the schedule. Uh, I just wanna make sure that we at some point, uh, in the morning, we get our AI panel in and in the afternoon, we get the crypto panel. So, uh, I am flexible in the schedule and we can make it work. So, alright, let me see, is there, uh, I've got my notes here. Uh, uh, Mitch, our nominations are closed, correct?
They are. I've been reaching out to everyone who's received a nomination. Uh, I have not reached out to everyone yet. Darren, for example, I still need to confirm whether you're going to accept the nominations you've been nominated for, which there were a few positions. Uh, otherwise, uh, once I get all the nominations, I have been meaning to make the post for the 2025 conference page. I will get that done. I will have every uh, position that's up and everyone who's been nominated and accepted the nomination. Uh, we will have at least one nominee for every position and Eli, I will thank you for that one, since you, you were the one who stepped up for that. So, we will, we will have a full board by the end of the conference.
Alright, awesome. Okay, uh, do we have uh, volunteers, hopefully three of us to, for the election committee to handle uh, the taking of votes and counting of votes? Have, have Dustin? You're still, go ahead Dustin.
Oh, I was just volunteering.
Oh, you're just volunteering, okay. Uh, hmm. What is our me, what is our, do we have, what is our method of voting right now, Mitch? Do we have?
For the conference, I don't think we have the established method just yet. What, how did we receive the tallies for the votes during uh, last year's conference? I figured it would just be an identical process.
I thought we had a form or something.
You just used a form with Condor Set and it was like Google Drive or something? You had a form or?
Okay.
Or what? Something like that?
Believe Ty might have set up the form last time, which I mean, if that's the case, Ty, I think would be able to set up an identical form, no problem.
Alright, I will follow up with you guys later this week to see if we can get that uh, Joe, go ahead.
Um, we have a form in Massachusetts that you can use as well, if you contact Steve.
Alright, and welcome Joe. By the way, why don't you introduce yourself?
Uh, Joe, the representative candidate for Massachusetts.
Alright, thank you sir. Uh, would you be willing to serve on our uh, election committee?
I would have to respectfully decline because I am still getting my face rolled over by small children.
Oh, okay. Well, that's fair.
And uh, honestly, a lot of my efforts right now is still making sure I am lined up perfectly to really smoke the Democrat this year.
And I hope you do.
You know.
We appreciate what you're doing up there. Alright, uh, Mitch, can I put you as a, as a two on that?
Absolutely.
And uh, I'm making the call out there for anybody else. I will be a fail-safe if we don't get a third. I just, you know, our three pirate rule works pretty well. Darren?
Yeah, I'll volunteer.
Okay, so we have Darren, Dustin and Mitch for our election committee. Uh, if you guys wanna see if you can coordinate with either Joe or with Ty to make sure we have a form that we can use and make sure you guys all have access to it so that you can all concur and we're happy with the vote counting then, so. Okay, thank you Joe. Alright, I'm checking to see if I have any other notes that we need to do for cleanup things for the conference. I think that's it. So Darren, you're gonna update us later this week with final details on the location. We're still in San Francisco, right?
We are still in San Francisco. We are mere blocks from the, from the uh, the hostel.
Okay.
Uh, this is where Columbus is uh, uh, I don't know, either fortunately or unfortunately, right next to all the strip clubs.
Yeah.
Uh, the Barbary Coast. It's actually, it's right around the corner from my old apartment, actually. Uh, and uh, but it's uh, it's a historic location uh, that I actually have access to uh, through a business partner of mine. Uh, and everything else was either turning up to be not enough hours available or way too expensive. So I was like, okay, I'm gonna pull some strings here.
That's fair. Alright, well, yeah, we'll look forward to hearing from you on that and we'll get an announcement out there. Wanda, go ahead.
Um, I wanted to say that um, that Demon Days in the YouTube chat has suggested putting up a map on the event page for the conference so that people don't get lost. I wanted to bring that to y'all's attention.
I think we should be able to do that. That would, that would be helpful. Alright, Mitch, go ahead.
Uh, this is actually a question for Darren. Did you need uh, RS, I remember asking you about RSVPs. Did you still need people to RSVP? And if so, is there a way to RSVP?
Not, not so much uh, RSVP uh, now, but uh, if it's gonna be over 12 people, I mean, it would be, would be really good to, I mean, I'll figure something out between now and then, uh, now and Wednesday.
I don't expect more than 12 in an in-person, at the in-person location. I think, I think unfortunately, a lot of us are gonna have to be remote. But uh, we'll, we'll soldier on there. Um, okay, so next thing I have is uh, Mitch, do we have, do we need to do anything? Have, do we need to finalize anything for the coalition, other than we need to hash out a name between everybody?
I, no, I believe the bylaws that were sent over to the Transhumanist Party, they, you will guys agree to it. Any changes that you guys made or, or suggestions or edits, we, we stood by and agreed with. So I think the bylaws as it stands is good to go. I think the only thing we do have to add is the name.
Okay, um, do we have some representatives that want to handle that? Janati, go ahead.
Yes, so in the chat, I included the list of names that the US Transhumanist Party provided and then the list of names that Mitch sent over to me from the US Pirate Party. And I'm thinking perhaps we should just go over the names that the two lists have in common. Because those would be the most likely names, given the consensus that has already been reached, at least as to the mutual acceptability or the fact that both of our groups have recommended those names and perhaps sometimes there are variations upon a given name that we could discuss and figure out which one we prefer. As I said during the Virtual Enlightenment Salon, essentially, we want the name to be inclusive enough that it represents the values of both of our organizations and future minor political parties that might join. But also not so generic that anybody who just doesn't want to run on a Democratic or Republican Party line, or even does, uh, and feigns a kind of Rhino or Dino strategy, but is actually a partisan Republican or Democrat, uh, might uh, latch on to. So, when, when we're looking at the names here on the list, we see the third-party coordination cell on our N third-party coalition cell from the Pirate Party and third-party coalition cell. I don't have a problem with, but I think Mitch previously said he doesn't like the third-party label for minor political parties. So, I will say, that's a kind of tentative consensus item, but if we can find something that resonates more, uh, we could go with that. So all hands, I know Drew said he really liked anything with all hands in it, and we have several variants here in our list, including All Hands Future, All Hands on Deck Alliance, All Hands on Deck Coalition, and All Hands on Deck Futurists. So we can discuss which of these variants we might prefer. Coalition for a Free Future, also in the Pirate Party list identified as just Free Future or United for a Free Future. So, we could discuss those. And I think those are the main overlaps between the two lists. So I would say, let's start there, and if we arrive at a name that just gets universal consensus amongst all of us, we will go with that. So, I will
If I wouldn't, if I could make a suggestion to everybody, and let's see if we can, see if this works. Uh, the first one, uh, the first All Hands, uh, the first All Hands on the, on the USTP list is All Hands Future. And we're, we're calling us ourselves a coalition. So, an All Hands Future Coalition would be, that's what, you know, would be out there. I think that sounds pretty, pretty good. Um, that's just my opinion. I'm just throwing it out there. Um, if everybody is agreeable, I think that fits both of us as well as we can do and still be very inclusive to anybody else that should be joining us. Uh, because we are both forward-looking parties. Uh, you guys especially are looking to the future and future technology. Uh, and um, and I personally like the All Hands, just because of the All Hands on Deck reference. And All Hands goes together with everybody, everybody working together. Um, and I just think that represents us, all of us, very well. And uh, if, if we're happy with that, I'm looking for anybody to object to that. Any, all of us here, if anybody has any objections, that's what I'm looking for. Mitch, go ahead.
Uh, I'm just speaking out because I see uh, Jason in the chat is saying that All Hands doesn't ring for him. And I will say, I, I like the name All Hands and I do think that All Hands, you know, something that would ring well. I do think we are both future-thinking parties and I do think that a name that would reflect both of our parties, at least in the beginning. Uh, and as it grows, it becomes a more broad term. Uh, I see nothing wrong personally with All Hands or Free Future or something to that effect. All Hands for a Free Future, uh, All Hands Towards a Free Future. If, if we wanted to remix and do whatever we want with it, I absolutely have no problem with that, but I would be at a loss if I didn't mention uh, how in love I am with Broadfront Free Soil. But obviously, I'm not gonna force my issues here.
I, I appreciate that Mitch, but yeah.
I just love the idea of calling the uh, the coalition best friends as shorthands, because it'd be BFFS is the
Uh, Darren, go ahead.
Well, speaking as the resident sailor, uh, I adore All Hands because it is, it does come from All Hands on Deck. Uh, which is the old ship saying, you know, whenever there's an emergency, all hands on deck. I just had to go through All Hands drills last week, uh, doing uh, for cruises on the ship, so uh, that's, uh, I just wanted to let everybody know that's where it comes from. Uh, so you gotta expect that from pirates.
Alright, thank you. Uh, do we have any other suggestions, any other strong opinions that uh, really wanna, anybody really wants to get in there? I'm, floor is open, just raise your hand, I'll recognize you. Go ahead Mitch. Oh, uh, Anthony, sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add in there real quick as, uh, you know, from the transhumanist side of the aisle. I, I like All Hands as well from the pirate perspective, but also, I mean, if we're, if we're thinking about visiting deep space or finding alternative life forms, uh, do we wanna join hands with them as well? Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, do we wanna reach out to uh, alternative forms of life in a post-human world? Yes. So, I mean, things that, that evoke the knowledge of, or that, that image of All Hands not just being a, a, a boating term, but a call to action as well.
And a term of unity, a call for unity.
Exactly, it is. Um, and a collaborative future. So, I, I like, I like the, at least the terms, the, the shape that it's taking with All Hands, uh, Free Future, Future Coalition, um, the idea that we're, our, our common goals remain the same. That this is an ideology that can't necessarily get tainted or manipulated as easily as we've seen with uh, you know, our main political party counterparts.
I agree with all of that.
I think it's hard to interject uh, personal um, agendas into something that represents um, a free future with all available hands and unity.
So, what is your suggestion? All Hands Future or All Hands Free Future?
I mean, that's the thing, I, I don't have, I mean, I like the combination of those ideas. I don't necessarily have a strong feeling or suggestion towards what order they should be in, but All Hands Free Future, All Hands Future, uh, for a Free Future Coalition, uh, Eddie, All Hands Free Future, those are kinda like my two, um, you know, highlighted points, I guess.
Alright, uh, Mitch and then Janati, and I'll come back to you Wanda.
Uh, I will say, I think All Hands, just for all the points given, uh, is the best general broad stroke. Uh, that being said, I think about like back in the day, and again, I, I apologize, I'm not bringing up the Broadfront again, but the the Free Soil Party used free men, free labor, free soil and uh, Fremont and victory, or whatever the phrase was. We could easily be All Hands and pirate the line, free men, free soil, free future. Like, so we don't have to incorporate it in the name as much as we're incorporating it in our slogan. This is what we stand for. We stand for free men, free labor, free futures. We want, you know, we want you to control your destiny, but I think All Hands
So separating the, the actual name from the slogan, like uh, like a, like the free, freak be part of the slogan while All Hands is the name.
Yes.
I think that works too. I think that absolutely works.
Alright, uh, Janati, go ahead.
Yes, uh, I, just on a technicality, was thinking of the wording and if you put free after hands, then it could be read as hands-free, which is not the implication we necessarily would want to have, though hands-free future, if you have autonomous vehicles might be uh, a nice possibility, uh, but perhaps not what we're going for with the name, since we want All Hands involved in creating this free future. So, for the most descriptive name, I was suggesting All Hands for a Free Future or All Hands for a Free Future Coalition, but among the list that we have, All Hands on Deck Coalition could also work and then free could be in the slogan, but it seems like Darren likes the All Hands for a Free Future Coalition. So, I'd be happy to go with that and that includes the Free Future. It doesn't preclude further slogans or elaborations along the lines that Mitch was talking about, but All Hands for a Free Future can't be gamed by anybody, as, as we were saying in the Enlightenment Salon, Andrew Cuomo isn't going to attach himself to uh, the All Hands for a Free Future Coalition.
That sounds good to me. Wanda, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, I, I really do want us to go with a name that isn't too long-winded. I feel like you can certainly say too much having a long name.
Uh, do you have a suggestion?
Um, just that we should stick to something reasonably short.
Is, is All Hands for a Free Future too long for you?
I'm, I think, I think that is a little too long.
Is, is there one of them that you, you're one of the uh, variations that you like better?
Um, let me scroll back up to the list. I do like um, All Hands Future.
Okay.
The first one on the list.
That's the shortened version of it.
I apologize.
Okay, well, let me go to Joe, and then I'll come back to Mitch.
Not to uh, jump in on this, but what about All Hands for Freedom?
Well, we were trying to incorporate the future side of things to, to cover, to cover the, both parties. Um, just so that we're a little bit inclusive in both of, both of the founding parties. So, that is a kind of why I, one of the reasons I like the All Hands Future. Um, I'm certainly amenable to All Hands.
Is there currently a third party that's called like the Freedom Party or anything like that right now that we could get, that this could get confused with? Cause I know that there's, there were a few floating out there for a while, like
Yeah, it looks like, oh, good, yeah, no, that's probably bad.
Right.
Uh, the Southern Poverty Law Center says, a whole page on the American Freedom Party. White nationalists, no, I don't think we wanna confuse ourselves with that.
Right, well, that's, that was my only objection to using freedom as the main focal point, because I'm like, I know freedom has been co-opted by certain uh, ideological groups.
Right, right. Uh, David, I haven't heard from you yet. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that if we went with All Hands Future, we could still also non-abbreviate it sometimes to All Hands for a Free Future and say, you know, that's what it means, but, and then stick with the shorthand version, you know, for most of the time. That's just all I was gonna say, but, yeah, that other thing you just brought up, yikes, yeah, definitely we need to deal with that.
We wanna dissociate from that.
Yeah.
Um, I think Mitch and then Janati.
Uh, you could skip me, whatever I was gonna say passed.
Okay, go ahead Janati.
Yeah, so I think it would be fine to have All Hands for a Free Future be the long-form name and then All Hands Future be the concatenated name that we use in conversation and then and then it would flow more smoothly. Now, I think the name is sufficiently different from the Freedom Party or the American Freedom Party. First, because All Hands comes first, and then there's an emphasis on the future, and it's free rather than freedom. So there is that difference, and we don't call it a party, uh, we call it a coalition. So I'm usually concerned about overlaps of names or being too similar to an excellent organization's name. But I don't think we should give that group the monopoly over anything, uh, derived from the term free. That would be conceding way too much to them, especially since we don't believe they actually represent true freedom. So having the adjective free isn't going to create that association, in my view. Uh, now, if we were to call ourselves the Party of Freedom, and they're the Freedom Party, then, uh, we would have a problem. But we're not anywhere close to that. So at present, I think in recognition of the desire to have a concise name, but also have a descriptive name, I would be in support of this approach, where the full name is the All Hands for a Free Future Coalition, and then we call it All Hands Future when we want to mention it quickly.
I, I am on board with that. I am gonna ask one more time, do we have any objections to that? And if we don't, I think we have some consensus. Going once, going twice, do we have any objections in the chat? I'm not seeing any hands. I think we have some consensus there, and I think we're in, in agreement. So All Hands Future Coalition, uh, and All Hands for a Free Future will be our... And I think Mitch, you have a good thing for the tagline?
Uh, yeah, wait, I, I don't have a tagline. I'm sorry, I was laughing, and, and you're gonna have to forgive me, because I was thinking about how the, uh, the Wobblies is a nickname for, for the IWW. And I just, for some reason, the word handy popped in my mind for All Hands. And it, it almost bobbled me. Yeah, I just, I can't go without mentioning-
I, I think we're handy though, right? I think we are handy.
Well-
But, but getting, getting called handies might be, I guess it's something that would grow on you. A handy is a cellphone, I, yeah.
Well, we, we aren't German, though.
I mean, speak for yourself.
If I go into a massage parlor and act for, ask for a handy, I'm sure they're not gonna give me a cellphone.
No, no, that's true. That's a different, that's totally different context.
That's what I, that's the part that makes it funny, though.
Run that by, run your, run your tagline bias again, Mitch.
Uh, what was it?
Free lines.
The Free Men, Free Labor, Free Soil, Free Future?
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Four lines, I'm sorry.
All, All Hands, All Hands for a Free Future, Free Men, Free Labor, Free Soil, Free Future. And we're reclaiming handies.
Or reclaim-
I do want to say that free labor sounds wrong. Like, I know you don't mean it like that, but it sounds wrong.
I, I miss that what you're saying, but I will mention that I am stealing that line directly from the Anti-Slavery Free Soil Party. So that phrase in particular has anti-slavery roots, as opposed to, we should, we should enshain people.
I, I'm aware, it just sounds the other way around.
Janati, go ahead.
Yes, well, I'm familiar with the 19th century abolitionist movement. And to me, the first association of free labor is you are free to perform labor, and you're also a free person who is performing labor. So you're not constrained, you're not compelled, you're not restricted in your ability to work or not to work at a particular occupation.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, we can work on the, we'll work on the tagline if we have some disagreements there. But I think we have a name, and, uh, so All Hands for a Free Future and All Hands Future, um... Somebody want to check and see if AllHandsFuture.org is available?
Long live the handies. Let me see.
Yeah, they-
There's no website pointing to that domain, so I think it's still open.
It would be awesome if it is. Uh, well, we can, that's something we can tackle later. Uh, do we have any other business that we need to attend to? Janati, go ahead.
Yes, so, uh, I would like to essentially get access at some point, and this is not urgent, to the version of the bylaws document that incorporates all of the suggestions that were discussed. The reason why is sometime within the next month, I would like to get the members of the US Transhumanist Party to vote on ratifying the bylaws in order that we could have automatic reciprocity in the candidate recommendations. This was a matter that we discussed previously. Instead of having all of the candidates go through the individual endorsement process, if the USTP membership accepts this document via a vote, then any of the candidates that the Pirate Party endorses for offices other than president or the very rare instance that there's a competitive election between pirates and transhumanists, which I don't think is going to happen. But for all of those other instances, the ratification by our members of this document will be considered an acceptance of all of the Pirate Party endorsements going forward, and that is going to streamline matters substantially. At the same time, I am thinking on that very same ballot, we'll have a separate question about Zoltan Istvan and his run for governor of California. By the way, nothing precludes any of you from also joining the Transhumanist Party, and then you would be able to vote on that endorsement as individuals. And I am sure there will be robust discussion on it, but that could be one of the endorsements that could be subject to the cross-endorsement process early on, especially if, say, both of those questions are on the ballot and both of those are approved by the members who are voting.
I don't think that's gonna be a problem. Mitch, you have a copy of the, do you have a copy of that? The updated-
Uh, yeah, I have a copy of the bylaws, and since I have the email with, uh, the edits or the, the revisions from the transhumanist side, I could just make sure to coalesce everything and get that copy sent over right away.
Okay, Joe, go ahead.
Uh, just a quick thing to report. I know I've been absent for quite a bit dealing with some family stuff, but I am still very, very active. Uh, currently, we have done a major census of pirate members, and it pleases me greatly to report that even though we haven't reached out to every single town, we have over 721 members now in Massachusetts. We've been reported in the news multiple times now with our local news and ma- major chains, and we continue to push forward and do really big things in Massachusetts. Um, so, you know, I just wanted to let you guys know that I haven't gone anywhere. I'm still committing to, uh, fight the good fight and really give those Democrats up here a nosebleed. And even if they don't, even if I don't make it in, they're already adapt, adapting and winning our policies over, which to me is still a major victory. Uh, they're adopting a lot of our, in order to cut my base out, they're adopting a lot of our policies, which is like a solid win anyways, with data privacy, with privacy for the individuals, with, uh, all these laws that we're winning. So, um, doing major thing up here. So take hope that you guys are doing the right thing and keep pushing forward.
Uh, you went, uh, he froze. We lost, we, we lost you there, Joe, you, you, you-
No, I just, I'm done.
You're all done? Okay. The last little, the last little bit, you broke up really bad. So, but we appreciate everything you're doing there. Uh, we know you're, you're busting your butt up there in, in Massachusetts, and, uh, that's all good stuff. And I, I, the news on how many members you have, uh, up there is, that's, that's amazing. Uh, Wanda, go ahead.
Are y'all willing to hear another name suggestion?
Well, I think we kind of, I think we kind of got that covered at the moment.
I mean, that's fair, just, um, one of our, uh, one of the people in the YouTube chat, uh, came up with a name that I, that I like. Um, it's All Hands for Advancement.
That's not bad, but I think we've, I think we reached consensus.
Fair enough, I just wanted to put it out there.
I, I appreciate the suggestions. Uh, I appreciate all the work that everybody's done on this, uh, from both parties. Uh, I look forward to this working very well, working both of, both of our parties working together. And, uh, Mitch, go ahead.
Gentlemen, fellow handies, wanted to say thank you all for joining us. Uh, you're gonna hate me, because I'm not gonna give that one up. I want to thank you guys for joining us. Uh, and Drew? Golly, I gotta say, this party, this, the Pirate Party, and our new friends, the Transhumanist Party, we're, we're great parties. But the thing about us, the thing I like about our party, we believe in being a good neighbor, the US should be a good neighbor. We believe in clean water. And damn it, if purchasing is an ownership, then piracy isn't theft. Drew, I motion to adjourn.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Wanda. Uh, do I have any objections? Looking for hands.
Um, I'd like to make a quick announcement before you adjourn.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Dan Tweed, I ran for the vice presidential slot with the Transhumanists, uh, in the last go-round. Uh, and I'm a big fan of, uh, the new state-issued gold currency called a Goldback. And I think we should, uh, get, if you, uh, accept this at your business, you can get listed on their site for free as being a business that accepts it. So I'm, I'm using these as my next campaign tool, and I, I'm really looking forward just to promoting this along with the All Hands Future, uh, to my district, uh, which includes Thousand Oaks Boulevard. You know, Thousand Oaks has 125,000 citizens, and, uh, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard in my district, I'm sure I'm gonna find a lot of merchants that will say, yeah, hell yeah, we'll accept Goldbacks. You know, they don't lose value, half their value every six years, like the Fed notes in your wallet do. So, uh, pirates are pretty good with gold, and these are counterfeit-proof. They all have serial numbers, there's eight states that have made them under state constitution, you know, laws that let gold and silver be state-issued money. So, uh, I would just say go to Goldback.com and, uh, get yourself some, uh, Goldbacks. I even bought some off Facebook Marketplace, so a guy delivered them, you know, um... But this is one thousandth of an ounce of gold, since gold is 3,500 an ounce. This has about $3.50 worth of gold in it. It doesn't scratch off, it's under very solid, you know, plastic, uh, you know, PVC coated, but it's made with vacuum deposition, like I said, impossible to counterfeit, basically. So I would just, uh, hope we could, as one of the first things the All Hands Party could do is we start to promoting the usage and, uh, promotion of Goldback, uh, and other alternative currencies like time dollars, uh, which, uh, you know, there's been lots of great alternative currencies, Ithaca bucks, being a great history of, of, uh, non-FED debt slavery money, so I, I hope-
Time is money.
Uh, trade creates money.
Yeah, trade does create money, and, uh, I'm all for going back to a standard that is measurable, like gold, instead of a paper, whatever the hell.
And we're not paying the true cost for things like land and nature and sunlight, so we gotta get-
Hell no, and we're raising the debt ceiling on top of it.
Yeah, okay, that's my, uh, objection to adjourning, but I'm glad you let me get my spiel.
Absolutely, thank you, Dan, and check out the, check out those Goldbacks. I think they're a pretty cool idea. Um, all right, well, thank you all for joining us. I appreciate you all for being here. I appreciate all the work everybody has done, uh, for this coalition, for our conference on Friday, uh, starting at 10:00 AM Pacific Time. We will be streaming again here on our YouTube channel. Go to USPirates.org/join, that gives you all of our links. Uh, Janati, do you want to, do you want to, uh, give us a plug for the Transhumanist Party?
Yes, of course. So to visit the Transhumanist Party, you can go to Transhumanist-Party.org, and there is a link to join as a member as well. Membership in the Transhumanist Party is free and it's not exclusive, so you can be a member of any other political party as well, and join the Transhumanist Party for the purpose of voting in our internal elections. Also, on my YouTube channel, which is G Stoliarov II, that's the first letter of my first name, followed by my last name, followed by two capital I's for the second. That is where we hold our virtual Enlightenment Salons every Sunday at 4:00 PM Eastern Time, 1:00 PM Pacific Time. We had Drew as our guest just earlier today. Next Sunday, I will be in Dublin, and I will be reporting back from the Longevity Summit that will be held there. Also, this is a fresh announcement for anyone who likes computer games. Go to this page that I just linked. We have published the latest version of LEV the game. LEV stands for longevity escape velocity, where you get to play a character whose goal is to live indefinitely or to whatever age you choose, and you make decisions accordingly. So check it out if you're interested in a nice game to play this evening or some other evening. And I look forward to much closer collaborations with the Pirate Party going forward in our All Hands Future Coalition.
All right, well, thank you once again to everybody. Get out there and vote All Hands Future. Have a good night.